Okay, then I think we will get started at this point. So, um, sorry, my dog just busted into the room. Good timing. Um, so welcome to the April 27th, 2021 meeting of the East Hampton School Committee. My name is Marissa Carrery and I'm filling in for our Chairwoman Cindy Quissey as she is facing some ongoing medical challenges. So we send her our very best wishes as she recovers and look forward to having her back with us soon. And so we'll open this meeting with a roll call vote. Um, Marin.
Marin Goldstein here.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham here.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia here.
And Mayor.
Mayor LaChapelle here.
And Marissa Carrery here. For announcements, um, next week, May 3rd through the 7th is Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, so we should all be sure to take the opportunity to recognize the extraordinary talents and dedication of our educational staff. Dr. Leclerc, did you have anything else to add about Teacher Appreciation Week?
No, I'm just so glad that you mentioned it because I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that event this evening, that it's happening next week. So we want to thank all of our teachers. I do have some other announcements though, when you're all set.
Okay, fantastic. I'll come back to you. Um, just have a couple more here. Um, our next regular session meetings for the school committee are May 11th and May 25th. And then, um, surprisingly, we have no correspondence this, this week. So, I mean, it's been a light week for us. And so I'll return to you, Dr. Leclerc.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know, and we'll be sending this out to all of our families. We will have an event, uh, next week, Tuesday, May 4th at 6:00 PM. And it will be hosted by Cooley Dickinson Hospital. Um, they're, they have an infectious disease, um, department. And their medical director, Dr. Joanne Levin, will be presenting on how families can protect themselves against COVID. So she'll be, um, addressing vaccines and talking about the importance of vaccines and protecting oneself against COVID. She won't go into any specifics about our East Hampton protocols, but just answering, um, parents' concerns about the virus. So we, uh, we will be doing that virtually next week. So parents will be getting information on that shortly. So be on the lookout for that. Um, and I do have two other announcements, just a recognition for our We the People team who competed this past weekend. If you recall, just a reminder for you and for everyone else, they are the state champions. Um, and they competed at the national level, virtually, uh, this past weekend. Um, and they did not place, um, in the top 12, but we are so proud of them for all of their hard work. And I had the opportunity to observe one of their practice sessions last week during vacation week. Those students were practicing every single day. So they're a dedicated group of students. Their teacher is amazing, Mrs. Brown, and they had so many community helpers, um, working with them. So just, I want to recognize all of their hard work and thanks to, um, all of the people involved with We the People. We're really proud of those students and all that they have accomplished this year. Um, and I do want to also mention one other thing. We'll be doing the, um, and I don't know if Laurie Garcia wants to talk about it at some point. We are doing the Walk and Ride Your Bike to School Day event next Wednesday. And again, parents will be getting information on that. We will not be doing tandem bagel like we usually do because we can't. So it'll be a little bit streamlined, but we will be doing that, um, event next week. So more information to follow. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. Um, so at this point, we will open to public speak. If there's anyone who would like to speak, um, we will request that you limit your remarks to three minutes. But if you want to gesture with a hand or a Zoom icon, be sure to call on you. I'm missing someone. Please call my attention to it. I'm not seeing anyone. Just want to give it one more minute to make sure we're confident. Very good. Then we will, um, we'll close public speak and move on to the subcommittee updates. And we'll start with our policy subcommittee and Shannon.
Hello. So we have our, um, EBCFA face coverings, um, that we made some adjustments to and had our first reading at our last meeting. So I would like to make a motion for the second reading of EBCFA face coverings.
I second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, then we'll roll call vote. Marin.
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Marissa Carrery, aye. And we have our finance subcommittee.
Yeah, we did meet, um, after our last, um, school committee meeting, uh, on the 14th. There's also a bunch of notes, uh, minutes that to be accepted into today's, um, with today's agenda. Based on the meeting notes from our pre-budget, uh, discussions. Uh, but in the last meeting, we basically reviewed, um, the Q2 and Q3 finances, um, looking over, um, what, uh, was sort of coming in on terms of our budget. Overall, um, there's nothing too major to note. Um, things that we anticipated, we're going to go lower because of not being in school. Uh, we're lower. Things that were, um, higher, we're still higher. Um, there's some different pieces. Uh, also just a question of payment lags, um, came up during our conversation as well. And that's, was pretty, uh, pretty much on track. So, um, overall, some of the savings that we, um, are going to see, or anticipated savings that we're going to be able to see from this year, are going to be able to then help fund the fact that we've got a negative 2.5% budget, um, going for next year. And so that those funds, um, through our reserves will be able to make sure that we're actually able to keep all of our staff, uh, employed next year. Um, and not have the, uh, budget loss impact our staffing levels.
Thank you, Marin. And Jonathan, any update from CES?
Excuse me, nothing super significant. Um, I'll just say the executive director's director search is still on track. The full board interviews are currently being scheduled for, uh, the like third week in May, I think. And strategic planning keeps, uh, moving along as well. They've, um, held some, um, focus groups, specifically with some of the board members, although I was not able to participate in those. But lots of big things going on there, um, continuing to set themselves up for a successful future.
Great, thank you. Laurie, did you have an update from the COVID response team?
Yes. So we met yesterday and I have to repeat that now, as we move on to this pandemic year with students back in, it's so wonderful to talk about positive events. And we were very fortunate to have Mr. Evans and part of the prom committee join us so we could go over the specifics that were talked about two weeks ago in this meeting. And, um, I have something very positive to report on the prom. So whereas they had come up with such a safe plan to have those circles in little separate dance bubbles with just one person in a circle. I had first mentioned that I hated to muddy the waters. They're very careful planning, but I really felt so bad for couples especially who are normally together. And this is their prom and they wouldn't be able to dance together. And at first we were like, but we can't go there. But then we talked about what about if students were encouraged to get two vaccines or one Johnson and Johnson? And our school nurse, Lindsay, so wonderfully offered to be in charge of collecting the verification of the vaccines. So we would have to, we figured out, um, Amy, our city nurse, figured out that it would have to be if they were doing the two vaccines. I believe we said by May 4th, they would have to schedule their first to enable the wait time and then the wait time after. And then it would almost be like, you know, um, when you go to a resort and there's, you know, all-inclusive. So we could do some type of bracelet or something like that where students had the verification to be able to dance together. It would be short dances and maybe just like three dances spread out. So it wouldn't be more than 15 minutes at a time. Like everything is thought out, but just to reward people for, for going forward and getting the vaccines and being safe. So, um, we hope that everyone likes that idea. And once again, it's being worked on by the nurses and the health department. So it will be safe. And, um, and thank you to Dr. Leclerc for mentioning the walk, ride and, um, roll to school event that at first I wasn't sure we would join. Um, the state date is already next week. But Scott Kavanaugh, who is one of our phenomenal teachers at Whitebrook and an active member of the Manhattan Rail Trail and trying to get more spurs to our great rail trail, he encouraged me to go forward with it. So I've been in touch and he's been in touch with our Safe Schools to, um, Safe Roots to Schools person at the Mass Department of Transportation. And we're just going to do a quick event next week. It's not going to be the weeks of planning. In fact, I just saw the gracious owners of Tandem on a walk and said, we won't use your tandem bagels this year, but please be ready to, uh, donate again next year when we're safer. But, um, Dr. Leclerc said that breakfast can be, you know, arranged as they are now anyways, once the students get to the school. But anyone who's on this call, I encourage you to email me at L Garcia at EPSD.us because I'm really trying to figure out what would work best for the community. Because the first time we did it, it was on two separate dates because of logistics. Two years ago, when we ran it, we all started at the safety complex. First, there were the high schoolers and middle schoolers, um, at 7:30 and then at 8:15, the elementary school students. I did reach out to Ms. Avril in Maple Street. I didn't hear back from her today. Once again, this is all very rushed planning, but I'd like to know from elementary parents if they'd rather just go from their own homes and just go to school and it's just, you know, encouraging to ride and walk to school or roll. Or if they'd like an event that we start at the public safety complex. Chief Alberti immediately got back to me yesterday and said, our fantastic police department will do everything to support this event once again. But I'm just, it's really a rushed planning, but I think sometimes these impromptu events are actually more exciting. And just to see the kids out there in a healthy way next week will be wonderful. So please let me know your thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Laurie. Um, so our next agenda item is the superintendent update.
Thank you. Um, I just have some anecdotal, um, pieces of information to provide to you tonight. And, uh, the first thing I'd like to tell you, well, this is not anecdotal, this is factual. We have, um, welcomed back, uh, 1,110 students to the district in full in-person. At this point, we have 292 students as of yesterday that were still remote, um, which brings us to 1,402 students. I did speak with the administrators today and, um, they will update me with those numbers every week. And I'll try to provide you an update, um, every time we have a school committee meeting because I think that they've already been hearing from some parents that, um, want to transition their children back into full in-person. So those numbers were as of, um, yesterday morning, but those numbers will, I'm sure be going up every time. So, uh, from the administrators and from, um, I was at the high school this morning. Students are doing well. Teachers are doing well. Uh, I've heard anecdotally from all of the administrators that they are so impressed with the students and how well they are doing everything that is asked of them. And in particular, I just want to commend the high school students because they're just, uh, doing a phenomenal job at the high school. And really, uh, everything that they're doing is really working out. And the administrators have very little, um, they, they don't really have any problems with any of the COVID-related, um, things that we're asking students to do. Using the bathroom, uh, using the restroom, one person at a time. The next person has to wait outside. So we don't have too many people in the restroom. I mean, anything that's being asked of them, they've just adapted and it's working out perfectly. So we're really appreciative of the committee allowing us to bring back our middle school and our high school students, um, at this point in time. And I think it's really working out well. We did have some issues with some tents last week and wind, but we're addressing those issues. And the tents are, um, all pretty much up and we're still using them, uh, for meals every day and mask breaks. We've added a few more tents at the high school at the entrance just because their numbers of students were going up. And we wanted to make sure we had enough covered areas for students. So, uh, that's it kind of on our return and we're going to be talking about senior events in just a minute, giving you an update. But one thing that I wanted to do, uh, after our conversation last time is share with you a document that we have worked on, um, around, um, guidance that we need to follow in order to hold outside events. I think it was someone last week, last time we met that said, you know, do we need to keep approving these events as a school committee? And we've come up with criteria that has gone through the, um, COVID response team. They reviewed it. They've looked at it. They've approved it. And if you're okay with it, we will use this criteria as we move forward, at least for the remainder of this year, identifying, um, what events we can hold and how we can hold them. So I'm just going to quickly show you, it's just a one-page document, happy to share it out with you afterwards. This information comes from, um, guidance from the Department of Ed, Department of Public Health. It was reviewed today by Amy Hart, the city health nurse. Um, our team looked at it. So one of the things we're really looking at is, and these are all outdoor events. Events that have some kind of instrument or performance base. The performers have to be 10 feet apart. Um, audience has to be 25 feet away from the performers. Limit the audience to two people per performer with each family pod separated by six feet from the next pod, similar to graduation. Mask required for the audience. That has not changed as of the governor's orders today. All participants self-screen for COVID, covers on, um, the balled instruments and offer live stream for those that cannot be in attendance. And events or ceremonies without live music. This could be award ceremonies, graduations, step up days at the elementary school, anything like that. Again, mask required, six feet, social distancing, capacity limits, two guests per participant. Uh, this not to exceed 150 will change, um, I think sometime by the end of May, but I'm not sure when that date is. All participants self-screen and if food is included, like for an end of season, um, sports team, it will follow our lunch guidelines, outside packaged meals, no buffets and 10 feet of distancing while eating from other families or participants. So those are our guidelines. Um, and as I said, that was approved by the, or, or discussed at the COVID response team meeting yesterday. No one had any, um, concerns about it. They, uh, like you, don't want to have to, um, necessarily address every single event that the school wants to put on. They just want to have some, um, guidance that we can all agree upon. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about this guidance. And I can stop my share.
Because, so one of the questions that I raised in our previous conversation was also just about, um, the frequency of these events. Um, when we were talking with Principal Evans previously, it just seemed like there was a whole bunch of events. I won't exaggerate. There was, there was like five or six events that were right back on top of each other. And there really would be no way to know if any one of those events was, uh, causing spread. Um, and then suddenly anything in the future events from there would quickly, uh, be causing spread as well. So that was just a concern. I don't know if that was raised by the COVID team or anything else that you've seen information to discuss the frequency of such events.
So I think that, uh, what I would say first to that is a lot of the events that we're looking at will be very small and controlled. If we have an award ceremony, it would say only be with students that will be receiving an award for, uh, in that particular grade. So it might be a very small subset of a grade level. And they would all be the only ones that would be in attendance. It wouldn't be the entire class or the entire school. We did consider having a sign-in sheet, uh, so that we could co- do contact tracing. But I will say that our city health, um, nurse, Amy, who does all the contact tracing for the city, looked at our criteria and said, I don't feel that you even need to do that. She said, because it's outside. She said, I feel that you have no big red flags here. She said, I think you're fine. We're talking very small, um, events. So we're not talking about a large group of students.
Laurie, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Leclerc. I just want to reiterate, that's exactly how it was discussed and, and what we almost realized. It's Amy that has to make all of those phone calls. So she's super careful. And also Megan, our epidemiologist, everyone examined everything that was going to be done. And because it is outside, there really are no red flags. So even if there were to be back-to-back events, there is nothing that would produce any fear for them, the professionals. But thank you for considering that, Marin.
Is this something that we would, um, need to take a vote on?
Well, I think, yeah, okay, go ahead, Laurie.
So these questions keep coming up. So I think how Dr. Claire presented this as a group of events, Marin said five or six events and all the details were discussed. I think that it's not necessary that we vote on it. I think it's necessary that we know that these events are going on. Something like sports though, that will be coming up later this evening, that is something we need to vote on. And that was also questioned in the COVID response team. But I reminded people that high schoolers aren't even, um, supposedly forced back into, um, person learning at this point. So school committees still have jurisdiction over that. Whereas the end of the year events, I think as long as we're meeting with the COVID response team and the, the health professionals are deeming it to be safe, I think we can safely say it's okay. But my fellow committee members have to decide if that's okay with them.
So I guess I'm just wondering, um, Dr. Leclerc, are you seeking clarity around what types of events we expect to come through the committee? So that way for future events like the ones you've just described, we wouldn't need to, um, get our approval?
Well, rather, I think what I was looking for was your approval on the criteria that we have set up so that we don't have to bring events to you. I mean, as a school district, we're certainly not looking to create a lot of events. We just want to have, you know, maybe a fourth grade step up, you know, at the schools. Um, and we would, you know, that's an event that has historically happened. Um, I know the, um, the eighth grade, they're looking to do, you know, a little graduation ceremony. You know, a little, um, uh, they'll, they're going to do a virtual award ceremony is what I believe will happen. So they're not even going to do that in person. But, so just little things that we've, uh, events that we've done in the past. We're not looking to necessarily create new things, but just to get your approval on the criteria so that we don't have to come to you for every event.
Yes, Laurie.
I would like to add that, um, Ms. Belize, the principal from, am I muted still? No. Ms. Belize from the principal from Whitebrook is also on our COVID response team. And she did say that the middle schoolers were like, oh, do we get to have our eighth grade semi-formal? And they're being very careful about that. They're saying, no, you will have, you know, proms when you go to high school. So just know that all the administration in the district is being super careful and cognizant that we still are in the pandemic, even though we do see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes, Shannon.
Sorry, it took me a minute. Um, so I, I was the one who actually mentioned it last meeting. And, um, I think that this is a really good idea. Only because, you know, Desi charged us with the return of school. Not necessarily the normal everyday events that happen in any of the buildings. I think it's important for us to get back to doing what we're supposed to be doing. And, and not have three-hour discussions about how big a circle is. You know, that's what, that's what we're elected to do. And, and I really think that now that, now that they're back in school, this really isn't our jurisdiction, to be honest with you. I mean, this is Allison's job. This is what we pay her for.
Yeah. Yes, Mayor.
I agree with what Shannon said.
Great. Um, I, I feel similarly that we, that we've, um, seen demonstrated from our administrators, a lot of care and a lot of skill in managing the buildings and as well as these events. And so, um, you know, I think it's probably also will be refreshing for our leadership team to kind of restore some of their autonomy in things that are, are well within their, their purview. So I, I imagine it would be useful to, to take a vote on these guidelines. If anyone would like to make a motion or there's further discussion out there, of course, that's welcome as well.
Um, I'll move. We, um, approve the guidelines as presented.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, then, um, we'll take a vote. Marin.
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Marissa Carrery, aye. Um, thank you.
And I just have, um, one other thing related to a return to school. And it is, um, has to do with sports. I know your favorite topic. But, um, the one sport, there, there are two sports issues tonight. One is a request to have, um, competitive cheer practice this spring and compete virtually. So that's one, that's one sport that you, you did approve the other spring sports, but not competitive cheer. So that's the only one we need to, um, discuss. And then there is, um, a second issue or, uh, that has come forward from the, um, high school. There is a request to have, uh, allow our teams to compete against communities that are designated in the red, which in the past you have not, um, been in favor of. So, uh, we did discuss this at, um, COVID response yesterday. And I will, I will tell you, uh, their, their thoughts and Laurie can weigh in. Regarding the first issue of competitive cheer, they did have, they did raise concerns over competitive cheer. Our understanding, and, and Mr. Evans is on the call, is that they're asking to practice inside in the Cafe Commons, which is really safest for them because that's where they can put the mats and the, the, the ground. the the ground is even. It's not really, I don't think, safe for them to practice on possibly uneven ground outside. And it, I think someone on our committee looked up the sport. And competitive cheer is considered one of the more higher risk activities under the MIAA, which you have reviewed in the past, some concern, you've expressed concerns over high risk sports in the past. On the flip side, their competitions are virtual. But the practices would be in person, and they have masks on, and they're in somewhat close contact. So the committee did not really feel great about recommending an approval to all of you on that. And the second piece around competing against communities that are designated in the red for softball and baseball and track and field, the committee did discuss that. And they did not have any reserve, any strong reservations. And Laurie Laurie may want to pipe in on that. They, the one concern that they raised was around participants, not not participants, excuse me, spectators. They think the spectators are probably more of an issue than the athletes. They did not raise concern, given the particular sports we're talking about. Softball, baseball, track and field, where students are are so spread out, and those sports are considered lower risk. So those are the recommendations from the committee. They did not have an issue with competition against communities designated in the red. Laurie.
Thank you for presenting that so well, Dr. Leclair. So I would like to stress that Amy, our city nurse, did say that she'd like to look more into why the MIAA has still said that it's high risk. We know that being indoors and being in close contact, even with masks, because they will be in close contact for a long time, presents risks at this point. And as far as the red districts, we did have a robust conversation about that. And as Dr. Leclair said, our main concern really for the spectators, because we see so many people with their fake mask wearing, and they're going to be in close contact. So even though the state is now changing mask regulations for outside, they have not changed them for being in close contact, such as when you are being spectators at a sport. But Dr. Leclair assured me that we have somebody who works for the district who can go around policing that. So I would like to make sure that that's the case. So if any of us ever, you know, went by a game and we saw unmasked people, we could question that, like, what's going on here? Because we have all seen how people are very careless mask wearing in many different situations. Thank you.
So I did ask Mr. Evans to jump in tonight. And Mr. Evans, did you want to add anything to either one of those issues that I brought up?
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Leclair, and thanks to the committee for hearing yet more requests regarding sports. I would say that the the restriction against playing teams in the red posed a lot of scheduling issues for our all the sports that we've played up until now, including really shortening many seasons. I do agree that I think it's pretty clear that softball, baseball, track and field, by the nature of those sports, present lower risk. In terms of spectators, yes, we have less control, I think, over spectators, particularly those that are not from that are East Hampton people. But one is we've restricted entry to sporting events. And two, the nature of those events are such that spectators typically don't mingle from opposite sides. I've been to a lot of baseball games. You sit with your guys on your side, and the other team spectators sit on their side. And, you know, it's pretty spread out. Even without COVID, it was spread out, trust me. But I, you know, I hear the concern. I think that we can do quite a bit in terms of managing the crowd. You know, I was at the football game on Friday, and really, we had three, four, five of us at the at the game monitoring the spectators for mask wearing, for checking in, because they had all had to pre-register. Brian Miller has done, I think, an outstanding job of maintaining all of the protocols that have been asked. And I think that the results have been good through through the year. Everything that we've put into place, I think, has done, has worked. Anytime we've had to quarantine, it's almost always because somebody on another team had tested positive. And yet, we have not had any any athletes contract COVID due to competition. And again, I think that the nature of these particular sports really lends itself to being safe. So, you know, a town being in the red, it really impacts our scheduling. And, you know, if we go into a into a tournament at the end of the season, which is possible, maybe even likely, we would have to forfeit any game that we would be scheduled for if that particular community was in the red. And it's just, you know, it gets harder and harder to sort of maintain a full season that way. So I appreciate your consideration. Cheer, I just want to say, I think, I think, in my opinion, cheer very much resembles basketball. Yes, there's a lot of, a lot of close contact. It is, I think, similar in the sense that we can have all the students tested every week. They're only amongst themselves. They're in a setting that is fairly large and spacious. I don't see it as a higher risk than basketball was. And we seem to get through that pretty well. And again, the competitions are virtual, so I think that's comparable to that. And we had some success with the with the basketball program in terms of mitigating any spread of COVID. So thanks for listening. Those are my pitches.
So I think that we are looking for a vote on whether you would approve competitive cheer or not. And if you would allow the currently approved spring teams to compete with all competitors.
Yeah, so let's split those into two conversations. Shannon, you have your hand up, so why don't you pick which one we'll tackle first?
Yes, which one I'm going to talk about? Yeah, so it's actually not like basketball at all. The stunting that that goes on is quick. It's fast. They're not going to be in a large, you know, a group of more than four for any length of time. You know, they can, they can do other things in between. And I'm only saying this as a former coach, you know, and it's really, I think it's less risky than actually playing basketball.
Thank you.
On the third, is it a hand?
It was. I would certainly agree with that on one hand, especially as we consider the fact that we're not coming into the contact with other teams that the basketball team would have been. I guess I have a question, which is we've, I think we've talked at length about the ability to really up the air flow within the gymnasium. And I'm curious to hear about why the Cafe Commons over the gym space.
That's where they've always practiced, isn't it, Bill?
Yeah, that's usually, that's their practice area. I think it's because they're usually competing with other teams that that need the gym.
Plus, the mats are under the stairs, aren't they?
Yeah, the what, the mats?
Aren't the mats under the stairs?
They're stored there, but they could be stored elsewhere. I don't know that the gym has better, certainly, we open the door to the gym. We can open the door to the cafeteria. We can open doors on two sides. Actually, might get more than that though there.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to add, is that if we can open that and create that circulation, that would certainly help. Yeah. Other thoughts on competitive cheer? Laurie, and then the mayor.
I value what Shannon said, because she's a coach. And I guess I can understand it better, because I've seen cheer when they're competing, but not what they do to practice. But I still am concerned about our city nurses' perspective. So I'm wondering if there's any way we can put this off, or is this, Mr. Evans, something we need to decide today? Because as a COVID response team, we were told that she was going to explore more why it's still high risk. And I feel that we can't discount what our city nurse, who's in charge of all the contact tracing in this city, said. Even though I'm not saying no, but I'd just like a little reprieve to be able to get more input from her and health professionals with science facts.
So I could, two things. One, Mr. Miller, who is on the call, just told me that the gym could serve as a suitable practice area for the team. In fact, might be better because of the food distribution going on in the cafeteria. But Brian, could you speak to the timeline and how quickly the the team would need to know about the whether or not they know now or before May, is the next meeting, May 7?
May 11.
May 11, yeah.
I don't know that any meet or competitions haven't scheduled yet. But I think by May 11, that would probably put them pretty, pretty far behind. Because there's a mandatory 10 practice dates before you could compete in any MIAA event. So that would put them, what, at May 21, they could start competing. So I think that that would be difficult for them, but I'm not, I'm not saying it's impossible. But I haven't really seen the schedule yet. So that was no help whatsoever.
Well, the 10 day thing was helpful.
Oh, the mayor first, sorry. And then I'll.
Great, thank you. Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with cheer going ahead and starting. Laurie makes a really good point, and I'm just wondering, for the sake of the cheer team, can we take a vote with the condition that the public health nurse does the research and finds there's a safe way to to have cheer? So the the team isn't behind the mandatory 10 practices. So it would be a vote to allow cheer with the condition that the public nurse needs to clear the activity or set parameters around cheering activity. To what I offered to the group.
I think one other thing that is helpful for cheers, that they almost, they put themselves in their own little pods. So you work in your stunt group of four, and you don't really wouldn't be considered in close contact with other members of the team. Whereas in basketball, I don't know who you're covering when, so who you're close to. But cheer, it's sort of built in pods of four. So if there was any need to to quarantine for close contact, it would be a much smaller group.
Laurie.
This information is all very helpful. So Shannon, maybe you could answer this. We were wondering on the COVID response team yesterday why in the fall, they were able to practice outside. I can understand the dangers of uneven grounds and placing the mats and safety for that reason. But would it be possible, until we get more clarification from our public nurse, would it be possible for us to vote yes with their practicing outside until we hear that it's okay to move inside?
The only thing is, they won't be, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, that was strictly for sideline cheers. That was not for competitive cheer.
Not stunting.
I was just going to say, they won't be able to stunt outside. The stunts that they do are higher risk than like the youth groups that we do outside. So it, I don't think it'd be safe for them to do their stunting outside. But I do want to mention, Bill, what what size is the team? Do you know?
Brian?
He may defer to Brian on that.
Eleven girls registered for sideline cheer, so I'm assuming it would be.
Probably 12-ish.
Yeah.
So you're, you guys are talking about three groups of four. You know, it's, it's really not, it's really not that dangerous. And like Brian said, they're, they're in their own pod. Once they form a stunt group, they're who they work with all the time. Anything else, they're a minimum of six feet apart.
Yeah.
Even with their dance, everything.
I did think of doing it outside, but now we have the tents on that front patio. So that that was the only area that I could have foreseen us using, because it was flat and solid. But now with the tents there, they can't use that area.
Well, thank you for the clarification. You know, we, we didn't know all of these answers, so that's why it's so helpful. But I can see that being in, you know, these small pods and not being a big, I had no idea of the numbers. So just knowing from what I've learned, being on the COVID response team, I'm in favor of it at this point. So thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely. Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve competitive cheer.
I second that.
Is there any further discussion?
I mean, I, I don't think it would be, I, I, I'm leaning in favor of all of this. I don't think that the mayor's recommendation is far fetched. And it seems that as the public health nurse reviews these things, that she may very well fall on the same side of the proverbial fence. As we talk about, you know, shifting some of the responsibility for making these decisions to the health professionals, I think that it makes sense that we should still, in this case, look for them to weigh in. So I, I would say I'm generally speaking in favor of the mayor's proposal to sort of approve conditionally based off of the public health nurse weighing in. And of course, the continued participation in pool testing and whatnot. So I don't know how other folks feel about that amendment, but that's what I'm out.
Shannon, would you be willing to make a new motion to include those two provisions?
Okay, so I just want to make it clear. So if if we say that we're waiting for the health nurse or the city health or city nurse, I'm sorry, to do her investigation or whatever she needs to do, will they still be able to practice even outside? I mean, they can start working on their dance, whatever, whatever they're doing. Would they be able to practice outside until those, you know, decisions are final from the COVID team?
I don't think it's something we should wait for the COVID team, because we're not going to be meeting for another two weeks. So I would think what the mayor suggested, and she can tell me if I'm wrong, is that they can go ahead. But this is something that we don't need to meet as a team. This is something that our city nurse can say no. But knowing how reasonable she is and how we base all of our decisions on science, I have a feeling there won't be an issue.
Right, and we talk to her all the time. So I can reach out to her tomorrow with this information and ask her to look into it and report back to us.
You know, if she has any questions, I, you know, I can, I can get her in contact with the coaches as well. I mean, so can Bill and and Mr. Miller, but.
Right, and if she makes any recommendations, we'll just have Mr. Miller and Mr. Evans incorporate them into the guidance.
Okay, I would like to make another motion to approve competitive cheer pending the results of the city nurse's investigation. I second that.
Sorry, do we also want to include mandatory participation in pool testing?
I'm sorry, I thought that was a given.
All right, excellent. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Then we shall take a vote. Maron.
Maron Goldstein, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor.
Mayor LaSchell, aye.
And Marissa Carey, aye. So let's move on to competing with districts in the red. Jonathan.
Could you remind us, Mr. Evans, you mentioned the restrictions on spectators?
You mentioned the restrictions on spectators that we've had for other sports coming along with the, the teams from other cities. Is the limit, can you just remind us the limitations there? And to what extent that is 100% necessary? Like, I understand the kids needing rides, although I know they also oftentimes come on a bus. I guess I'm just curious your thoughts on, you know, the, the restriction on, on spectators and whether we could even take that a step further.
Sure. So we, we started again in the fall, you know, with less information than we have now with soccer. I think would be the, the prime example where, you know, you're fairly, fairly large, spread out area where for contact tracing purposes, everybody had to come in and register. There was a limited number of spectators per participant. So Brian helped me out, but I think it was two per, per player. We did, I do not believe that we, Brian, did we keep it only home team spectators?
Yeah, it was only home teams and two, two spectators per player.
Right, and everybody had to check in. So that's what we did in the fall. In retrospect, I think it was probably aired on the side of caution more than it needed to be to, based on what we know about being outside and the amount of space that people have. You know, we don't get crowds at games where, you know, it's shoulder to shoulder. We really are able to, to keep people spread out. And I think baseball, softball, I don't even think we have bleachers. I think people pretty much bring their own chair. And so, you know, you really can enforce the spreading out, I think, pretty well. We would still require masks. I think people are so used to wearing masks that they would wear masks. So again, I, I think we can, we can really maintain a safe environment for, for everybody involved at our home games. And, and, you know, even at away games, obviously, we put it on the other town to, the other school to maintain the safe environment there. But I think they, they do very similar things. Brian, have, have we run into the same thing at other towns?
The, I think the spacing out wouldn't be an issue. Like you said, during soccer, everyone was, was, we basically painted boxes and they had to sit in these boxes. And I think that was a little bit overkill. For instance, at the football game the other day, we took all these precautions and the bleachers probably seat 1,000 people. And it was senior night for football and cheer, and there was maybe 50 spectators in the entire stadium. So, yeah, I mean, I am comfortable that on our, and as Bill said previously, like at home, our spectators sit on the, the third base side. The, the visiting team would sit on the, the right, the first base side with their, their teams dugout. So you are already sort of socially distanced from each other. And then at every event, you know, we have a site supervisor, which usually is me, who would be going around and just requiring people to, you know, socially distance and keep their minimum of six feet. And we do not have bleachers for baseball. We do have bleachers down at softball, but I'm planning on not allowing any fans beyond the outfield fence. So they would all have to sit out beyond the outfield fence to watch the game.
Wait a minute, that was confusing to me, Brian. Either there, you don't allow them beyond the outfield fence, or you only allow them?
For softball, only going to allow them on the outfield fence. Because you can see through that fence. Our baseball fence, it's solid, so you wouldn't be able to sit behind it. But there's plenty of space, you know, baseball field is much larger. So there's much more space down the left and right field lines.
Thank you. Hope that answers your questions, John.
Well, just to clarify, so it sounds like at home games in the fall, we didn't allow any folks from other communities to come as spectators? And now are we thinking about two folks per student, per player from the other team or no such restrictions? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we, we can limit, we can limit it. I guess the question is, do we think that that's completely necessary?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to understand your intentions.
Yeah, so we can go to the PVIAC and say, no visiting spectators are allowed. The one problem that I am going to have at Daily Field is that it's very difficult. It's a park. Soccer is kind of in the back corner and there's only sort of one way in. At Daily Field, it would be difficult for me to 100% enforce that. But I think we can send that message out. And a majority of the visiting fans would get that message. And there would always be a few who would be sneaking around.
Right.
Walking their dog.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not, we're suggesting or requesting that we limit zero to zero fans.
I think that, if I could just say, I think that, you know, given the governor's update today and also I think the CDC weighed in today saying that, you know, it's, it's safe to think about not wearing a mask outside. I think that speaks to the most recent information we have about outdoors being a, a, a place where we can reduce the spread of COVID. Now, in speaking with, I asked John Mason today at Nana Tuck Park, will they still require masks? And he said yes. So we're going the, we're going to continue to mandate mask wearing outside at sporting events. But I think that is a safety layer that we're ensuring that kind of goes or speaks to going above the governor's guidance. I mean, I know the governor's, and I don't want to, I don't want to put the wrong information out there. The governor's guidance was for being outside and not being at events. Events, it's still expected to wear masks. So that would be the expectation that we would have for any guests at the game, whether our families or the students' families from another team.
Appreciate that.
Laurie.
What Dr. Leclerc just said reminded me of something else we discussed briefly, but we did discuss a COVID response yesterday. So recently, right before April vacation, this state determined that if students or teachers are more than three feet, if, so if they are three feet, not six feet, then they would not have to be contact traced. And we are so careful in East Hampton that our district nurse and our school nurse decided that they felt that that, that regulation change was very strange. And I think they said muddy or murky, like it made no sense, as much of what's come from Desi has made no sense. So we are still doing the six feet. We're very safe in East Hampton, and I see the difference. And I'm so proud of this district and the administration and the athletics department and everybody who's doing everything to keep the city safe and you, mayor. So thank you.
I'm not sure we're moving toward a motion, but if anyone has one.
But I'll just add, I think it seems like we've got enough information that we can make a motion. We'll see whether or not it's passed. So I would like to make a motion that we proceed with allowing our sports teams to be able to play against teams, teams that are in cities that, or towns that are in the red.
I second that.
Let me have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll move to vote. Marin.
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Marissa Carey, aye. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The only other thing that was under my section was senior events, but I don't, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions. We did discuss the prom at the COVID response team yesterday. And I think you pretty much know the prom plan. They gave it their stamp of approval yesterday. And with the approval of the criteria that you provided to us tonight, Mr. Evans can go ahead and schedule some of the other awards ceremonies and that sort of thing. So I don't know if you have any questions for me or Mr. Evans while he's on the call still. Shannon?
I need to know, did we figure out how to take pictures?
Well, I usually use my phone.
Thanks, Bill.
No, we haven't, we haven't gotten into that yet, Shannon. But as soon as we figure it out, I'll be sending you an email. I, I, you know, I guess the question is, you know, the contact of, of couples being close together to take a picture, which I don't think is, if we're outside, is significantly different from what we're, that would fall against the guidelines that were established. You know, the big concerns are the physical activity of dancing and the activity of eating to require the, the masks off. So I think we'll figure out a, a safe way to allow people to take pictures. Am I guessing that pictures will happen at homes and in backyards and in front yards and on porches? Yeah. There will be pictures.
So anything else under the superintendent update?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, excellent. We are moving swiftly through our agenda. We are at our matters for action. Would somebody, Jonathan, I think you stepped in, would you mind running these votes?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the school payroll dated April 22nd, 2021 in the amount of $533,120.20.
I'll second.
Excellent. Marin.
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Shannon.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Thank you. Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Marissa Carey, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated April 22nd, 2021 in the amount of $534,857.53.
I'll second.
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Oh, sorry.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Marissa Carey, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 13th, 2021 for our regular session meeting with executive session minutes withheld until matters are resolved.
I'll second.
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Marissa Carey, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 24th, 2021 for our executive session to be withheld until matters are resolved.
I second that.
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Marissa Carey, aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for March 31st, 2021, our executive session also to be withheld until matters are resolved.
I'll second.
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Nicole LaChapelle, aye.
Marissa Carey, aye. Thank you. Do we have anything under other? Yes, Laurie.
It's already been discussed, but I'd really like feedback, especially from you, Marissa, with children in the school and Marin. What should we do about next week from a parental perspective about the walk, ride and roll? Do you think it's better to have the elementary school students go separately or like congregate? I, I really like the committee's feedback because it's such a strange year.
I don't know if I can speak for parents in general, but personally, I, I think it's nice to congregate and walk together, particularly at this period of the pandemic where we're all, you know, really craving opportunities to feel connected with our community. And it's really safe, outdoor masked, socially distant way to do that. So I would think it would be great to gather.
I agree. Marin, you too?
Yeah, I think so.
Marin, you're always there to help. Can you be there to help? Because I have to be teaching kids, like, and I do have helpers, but I don't know. It's really hard for me to ask for time to do this. I usually run it. It's, it's Cinco de Mayo, you, Cinco de Mayo. We can wear some bandos and like mariachi bands. We can do it all.
What time did we start it? What was the time again from that? There was.
So as I said, I was still waiting to hear back to make sure because Judy has always been so supportive. Allison, do you know?
It's 8:15 for elementary and 7:30 for middle school. I'm not sure of high school, we can pull it all, I'm not sure we can pull it all together for K-12. So we're focusing on K-8 right now.
Yeah, so that's what I thought. You know, high schoolers are welcome to do it. They're usually there to help the, the younger ones, but they really love getting those bagels too. That's a real motivating factor and they're not going to be there. And they're not so into the, I ordered stickers and reflectors and hopefully they'll be arriving in the municipal building on Tuesday. So it's really like a fast planning event. But I, I needed input because I don't know how to tell our police force that they're going to be helping to run it. So you think that starting at the safety complex is the best way? That's the most exciting, but I just wanted input, so thank you.
Laurie, if you just need people there to help conduct things, direct things, I'm pretty sure that I could make it, at least for the elementary.
That's wonderful. Thank you. So once again, it would be 7:30 for the older kids. And Meredith is always there as well, and she leads people to White Brook. And we have police leading and it's really exciting for the kids. And I agree that it's going to be nice to gather, but I just needed some more input. Thank you.
And Laurie, if you need help for the middle school, let me know. I can, I can just go into work a little bit later.
Okay, thank you. So the middle school is 7:30 and the little ones are 8:15. So anyone that can be there, thank you. Because that can help to socially distance people, make sure they're being safe, but hopefully they'll be safe. Thank you. So would you like me to make a motion to adjourn now that I gave us something else to talk about?
Yeah, we, we don't have executive session?
No.
We're done? Wow.
Look, and it's still, it's not even dark. The sun hasn't even set yet. Look at that.
Yes, please make a motion.
Okay, so I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, we will roll poll vote out. Marin.
Aaron Goldstein, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
And Marissa Carey, aye. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.